Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the August 6, 2024 meeting of the Smithfield Town Council. At this time, would you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilman Jeff Brooks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Smithfield Town Council meeting. It's good to have you here. The first item that we have on the agenda is a closed session. Closed session purpose is for the acquisition slash dis- excuse me, disposition of publicly held real property pursuant to 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia. Mr. Reddy.
We need a motion to go into closed session for that, that purpose.
So moved. Chair will entertain a motion. Motion made by Councilman Paxton, seconded by Councilman Gibbs. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Councilman Smith?
Uh.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Paxton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Bowen?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be in closed session to discuss that matter. It shouldn't take too long, but we will be as brief as we possibly can to handle this matter, and then we'll come back in the open session. Thank you.
The motorcyclist's leg, and then Sergeant Lester, who was driving his personal vehicle, stopped and also put on a real tourniquet and provided medical care until the medics arrived. It was determined that the life-threatening injury that due to the two tourniquets placed on his leg saved his life.
Mr. Bowman, on behalf of Towne Smithfield, I'd like to congratulate and thank you for your quick thinking, and I'd like to present you the Citizen Life Saving Award on behalf of Smithfield Police Department in Towne Smithfield. Thank you so much. (applause) But again, I also understand that what happened tonight has been a little bit out of sorts. The police department got in at emergency call just about the time council meeting. Do you have the award?
Yes, sir.
I didn't see you come in. I give you Chief Hallow.
Chief, for yours, sir.
Mayor Bowman and Member of Council, in the call that, on that same evening, you just heard that Chief Meyer mentioned that Sergeant Lester issued a license to be, and also rendered for saving. So on behalf of Smithfield Police Department Sergeant Allen, we commend you for the training that you put to work for saving the lives of the citizens of Towne Smithfield, and as such, we are pleased to give you this lifesaving award for you to don on your uniform, that people will know that what we train for, we actually put into practice. So congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Do you see my glasses back there by chance?
(laughing)
I will need those, thank you. To say the schedule's been a little out of sorts tonight would be an understatement, but thank you, Lester. The next item that we have is a presentation from the Governor's School for the Arts. Come forward, sir. Thank you. The floor is yours, sir.
Good evening. My name is Kaden Silves, and I am a newly graduated student of Smithfield High School and the Governor's School of the Arts where I was a member of the Musical Theater Department. Every five or four years, the Musical Theater Department participated in a cultural exchange mission tour to Japan. In the past November, I was fortunate enough to be a part of the latest tour. During our time in Japan, we performed live musical programs for audiences of several thousands, were housed in homestays with Japan, with Japanese families, visited and took part in cultural exchange activities in middle school and high schools, and participated in ambassadorial events hosted by the mayors of Kedokushu and Miyazaki. Mr. Mayor, for the letters and gifts that you sent and which we delivered on your behalf, the mayors of Kedokushu and Miyazaki have sent back as a token of their goodwill, some small gifts which I will present to you now.
On behalf of Towne Smithfield, thank you so very much. You can thank us also to the wonderful people that sent these. I greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Should we open now? All of them, back here. Open that one, Jeff. I'll open this one.
All right.
We've had a long-standing relationship with the Governor's School as far as this is concerned, so this is very nice. I am not sure what this is exactly. And I do not read probably Mandarin, so I'm not sure. Do y'all know what this is?
I just, we don't know what it is either. (laughing)
This is a kite.
Yeah.
Or a lantern, one or the other.
Very cool.
So we thank y'all very much. Thank you for coming today. Much appreciated. Next presentation is a briefing by Isle of Wight County Board Supervisor Renee Roundtree. Ms. Roundtree, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Bowman. Four things this evening, I'll keep it kind of short. Number one, the city of Hampton is going to be joining the Western Tijewater Regional Jail, which will help us lower the overall cost for current members. So currently the jail gets people we share between Isle of Wight, Suffolk and Franklin. The city of Hampton is joining that, paying their part. Thought that was of interest. Secondly, new pharmacy regulations, you may have heard at state level, are requiring the county to obtain our own license for purchasing drugs for use with fire and rescue departments instead of exchanging them with hospitals. It used to be a one-to-one exchange. You would bring a patient to the ER, they would give you the box, and it would return the drugs that you used. Now each county has to do that for themselves. So have to have secure storage and people trained, et cetera. So there is a cost to that and a ramp period, of course. Number three and four are kind of construction-related. Number three is that Nike Park Extended will break ground this month. It's within budget and will be substantially complete in December of 2025. And fourth, we'll be advertising for bids for the Smithfield Sidewalk project later this week. The project is expected to be completed by March of 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone have any questions of our supervisor?
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Next item on the agenda is public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to town council members that are not on the agenda. I have one person that's signed up, Ms. Laverne Tynes. Laverne Tynes still here?
She signed up. It's her first time.
Oh, you just signed that you were here. Okay, well, thanks. It's a pleasure to have you here. Thank you, Ms. Tynes. Anyone else in the audience wish to be heard? Seeing none, this opportunity for council to make any comments that they would like to make.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, ma'am. Come forward to the podium, please, if you would. We may be able to answer it. If not, we'll get your response back, for sure.
I just wanted to know.
Could you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Laverne Tynes.
Yes, ma'am.
I live in Lakeside.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to know, they start the work up there between Brown AM Church and connects to Lakeside Aquil Street. Come back. They have the medias up there. When they're going to start so they bring, so they can come down to come into our community?
Mr. Stallings, would you like to answer the question? Or Ms. Clary, one of you?
I can touch base on that, which the work that's been done so far comes across Brown's AMEs properly. We have some work to do on the sewer line that's there, and then we will put that ramp down. However, that access will only be for emergency use.
I understand.
So we will have a gate put up on the property that fire EMS and police can use.
Okay.
But yes.
So with the gate, is that gate going to be, you have to open the gate, or?
It will be closed and locked, and the fire and EMS and law enforcement will have a key to it. That'll be the only time it's opened.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Ms. Tynes. Ms. Tynes, if you ever have any other questions, you don't have to stay here for hours at a time. Mr. Stallings will welcome your phone call, I'm sure.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's good to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Again, council comments? Our next item I have is the consent agenda. First one is motion to award banking services to Old Point National Bank. Mr. Randy Pack?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We put out an RFP on banking services, and after reviewing our RFPs, we made a motion to award the banking services to Old Point National Bank.
Thank you.
We also have the invoices. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like me to take care of those.
Just a second. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. We have four invoices in excess of $20,000, which require council authorization. The first is to Athens Building Corporation for the work they've been doing as a progress payment on the football concessions facility over at Luter's Sports Complex, $73,215.11. We are, the access road we were just discussing behind Brown's AME to Blair Brothers, a progress payment of $38,100. We purchased a diesel generator from All First LLC for $75,000. And then we have our contribution to the Virginia retirement system of $22,330. And Mr. Mayor, we do recommend these invoices be approved this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Pack. Any council members have any comments or questions about the consent agenda items? Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull C1, please.
Okay, we'll be pulling item C1. Any other questions or concerns about any of the others? What we'll do is we'll vote on those if they're not in block.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve item C2 as presented, and move C1 to an action section.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second.
C2.
C2. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote on the C2 items A, B, C, and D.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Mayor Bowman?
Aye. And pursuant to Councilman Smith's motion, we'll now vote on item C1.
Before we vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to disclose this.
Yes, please.
I sit on the Old Point National Bank South Side Advisory Board, and I inherited that, if you will, when Old Point bought out Citizens National Bank, that I sit on the board there. So I know that Old Point is a very professional bank. They do a good job with their customers, they're community-oriented, and I'm very proud to be part of that. However, I don't make financial decisions with them, but I do want to disclose that I am part of that bank in some form or fashion other than just a customer. So I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this seat one.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. I understand exactly where you're coming from. Item C1, do we have a motion out on the floor to approve item C1? If not, the chair will entertain the motion on C1?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor, but I will make a motion that we approve item C1 as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Pack. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Second about Councilman Gibbs. Further discussion on item C1 and C1-1? Seeing none, the chair will call the question, please, ma'am.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Yes. Next item is the action section, item number one. Mr. Riddick?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I review the minutes from the July meeting and recommend they be approved as presented.
You've heard from the town attorney. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Pack. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Collins. Further discussion? Call the question, please, ma'am.
Councilman Gibbs?
Yes.
Councilman Collins?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Aye.
Councilman Brooks?
Yes.
Councilman Pack?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Mayor Bowman?
Yes. Next item under action section is new business, item number two. Is there any new business to come before council?
I have something, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Smith?
Thank you. I know there's a lot of talk in the county, in the town, about our growth, and we always seem to think that we're going to come up with something, but I never see any kind of actions other than trying to follow the rules, if you will, or look at some form or fashion of how we're going to control growth, or whether we're going to accept growth. It's inevitable. We all know that. I remember this town being very small when I was small, and I've seen it do some great things, but it took a long time. And now it seems that we're faced with a lot of obstacles and hurdles that we've got to get through. I made a few notes here. The county of Isle of Wight ranks sixth in Virginia's fastest-growing counties. There are over 1,400 approved residential units in the town limits that have not been constructed. This doesn't include development in the county that is close to the town. I personally have been contacted by many citizens in this town about their concern of what's going to happen with all the traffic and so forth and so on. I know we've all heard this. The growth is inevitable. And the growth is, is inevitable. Um, and could, the other thing that the citizens are reminding me of is they are very against any taxpayer dollar going towards private developments or private developers for profit. With that said, I'd like to make a motion that a town will not subsidize private development of any kind with taxpayer dollars.
I second that.
Mr. Pack?
Yeah, Mr. Smith, I'm just trying to, trying to understand. I, I understand your point. I agree with your point. Uh, I, I'm not sure what we're doing here. I, I mean, can we, can we just make a motion that we, and says we won't do it? I, I don't understand how the, how this process works.
My reason for doing this is, as I stated before we started talking, is that we, we, we're not addressing anything about how we're gonna do this. I feel like this is just a tool to address part of this problem so that we can study these things further and to understand the taxpayers' concern so that they can have a somewhat of a, uh, skin in the game, if you will. Everybody calls that. So I don't, I don't feel like that this is something that's, that's out of the ordinary. It gives us somewhere to look at, uh, gives our planning department to, to understand that when they explain something to, you know, a developer that, don't be looking for this, don't be looking for that, you know? We, all these other developments that have been providing the town have not asked for any taxpayer dollars. They've done all this on their own. As a matter of fact, we've gone back to them and we've requested certain things, and they have been very willing to, to do what they can do to make this about a town. While some of it's been passed that we don't like, they still worked with us. So I don't feel like that we need to think that we need to attract people when we already got a floodgate of people coming. It, it's coming. I mean, and it's been, and it's coming hard. When I saw the six fastest-growing counties in the state, that shocked me. It really is. And when I, I do know the developments that are being approved around the county, right on our lines, that's astronomical, too. And they're, uh, you know, there's a lot of good things happening, but at the same time, we've got to get a grip on addressing and just slowing this thing down a little bit. Um, you know, everybody has a right to develop their property, and, and I, I don't disagree with that, so, but I do think that we need to let, ask them to work with us and don't be expecting the taxpayers to do anything with their projects.
Mr. Collins, you have a question?
Yes, I do. So, but, but the motion is to say that we're not gonna be using our tax money?
We're not, we're not gonna subsidize private development of any kind with taxpayer dollars.
But you just said that that's, that hasn't, that, that has not happened. So why would we have to, why would we have to say this?
That's right. It hasn't, it hasn't happened, but there's a possibility if we don't make some kind of motion about it to, to understand that that's the direction we want to go in, then we've just opened it back up to anybody to, to ask for that.
But can we?
Uh, Mr. Gibbs?
Can we put together a, maybe a committee to, to look at before we just make a motion? I agree with you, Councilman Smith.
In theory.
Uh, in theory, I agree with you, hundred percent. But to lock it down without actually studying it first?
Mr. Pack?
Kind of like putting the cart before the horse.
Well, yeah.
Kind of like putting the cart before the horse.
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Pack.
My, or Councilman Smith, I, I agree with what you're trying to do. I, I get it. I just want to make sure we do it right. If we just say, here's a motion and we declare it tonight, I guess, Mr. Riddick, is there a, i- i- if we, if, if we are all favorable to agree with Ms., what Councilman Smith is proposing, is this the best way to do it? That, that's my question.
Well, it's kind of a, it's, it's kind of a broad statement. It's, it's a statement addressing a po, an issue that's never, a problem that's never occurred, so I'm not so sure. If you agree on that policy, maybe ought to develop a policy about, um, improvements and things like that. Um, there are things that you have, for example, if another developer were to come in and we told him to, that we needed additional capacity in this pumping station, we have to pay that. If we tell him, y- if he says, I need capacity for 100 units, and we say, well, we need a, a pump station for 200 units, by law, we have to pay for the, the incremental. And so if you go, is, is that, is that what you're talking about or? Because I, I'm not saying that you're, I'm not criticizing your, your policy, I'm just saying you need to think about this because it's not just that easy.
Well, I do know that in Mallory, Scott Farm, uh, we had to run the line, sewer line had to be bigger and so forth and so on.
And we had to pay for it.
They, pardon?
And we would have to pay for it.
They ended up paying for it. They agreed to pay for it.
It was proffered.
It's a proffer.
It's a proffer, yes. But had we required, we, they, they just did that. That was, that was the carrot. But that's not what the law is. I mean, they could have offered it, and that's fine, and we accepted it, but in a different situation, on, in the case of a, for pumping stations or millions of dollars in some instances. And if we thought we needed one, we would have to pay for it, and there's mechanisms to do that. But I'm just saying it's, it's really not that easy, it gets more complicated than that. If you want to develop a policy, maybe we come up with a policy, but just a, um, you could, they could vote yes tonight and five years from now, they can, the next council could change their mind.
That's correct.
And so I think it's better in a form of, nobody's gonna read this motion, it goes away. But if you develop a policy and you put that, uh, you know, these are the policies that developers need to understand, and you come up with that as something that can be shared with applicants for development in the town, I think that'd be a, a better way to do it.
So I can amend my motion. Is that correct?
Well, we're, you can, but we're still discussing the initial motion. I've got a question for council. Based on that motion, if the town decide, if we had a business come into town and we wanted to work with the business to, uh, was in the best interest of the town as far as tax basis is concerned and everything, that would prevent us from doing?
That's true.
Anything as far as assisting them?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct. And that's, that's, in many places, that's called economic development.
I, I think sometimes, you know, I, I, I think I know where this is coming from. Um, I know, uh, I, I just think it's an overly broad motion at this juncture to be, uh, put on the table with such an immediate second, um, that it's putting council, uh, in a precarious position to make what ends up being law without the advantage of having, uh, time to think about it in some foresight. And I, I would not be in favor of it.
Well, I'm in favor of helping Councilman Smith with, with, with the concept, 'cause, I'm not in favor of private money, right?
I have no problem, 'cause I'm, I'm on, wait a minute, I'm on record, when I ran, I said the same, exact same thing at the Citizens Forum. I said, I didn't believe that we should be providing any, any, uh, as far as the monies are concerned for private projects either for developers, for, for me, for residential developers. Business might be a little bit different, or as Mr. Riddick said, those things that come that are required by law. But this is a, this is a painting the whole thing with a broad brush at one time, and I, I don't, as you said, we haven't done it before. Why now? Why, why this, why this verbiage that you made notes about now? I don't understand it.
You know, number one, I can't believe you're sitting there telling me, why now? It's, it's, this growth is so great.
But the council, the council has never spent money that I'm aware of, other than what's required by law, on residential development.
And you don't see the, you don't see the future of that happening? Is that what you're saying?
I wouldn't vote for it.
Is, is somebody would, want that?
I wouldn't vote for it.
Well, if we have it in writing, then it, it's very clear. So if I change the motion to be in a policy?
For us to develop a policy?
Yes.
I'd like, as Mr. Gibbs said, I'd like to have a committee to, to be put together where you could share it.
And I would like to?
Frank, I'd love for you to do that. Have you, Mr. Gibbs, and someone else?
Yes.
And the town attorney get together and formulate a policy that would withstand any challenge by law, because when we start making, making motions like this that may end up in circuit court, I want the very best and brightest minds, both, both from a principle perspective and a legal perspective, thinking about it before we go and make, make this type of motion. That's, and now, once that's done, I wouldn't have a significant problem with it, but just to write here without any, any advance notice as to, of the capability even think about it for five minutes causes me a little concern. That's my concern. Mr. Collins?
I, I totally agree. I, I, I agree with your concept. I agree with not using private money for, our, our money for private, uh, development. I agree with that. But I also agree with, with developing this policy that we do not, we don't want to cut our nose off to spite our face if there's a tax incentive tool that we could use to do the right thing in the future. This, in my opinion, I think you're going down that road with tax incentives. If, if, if the right company was coming to the town and we wanted to attract that company, we, this, this would not allow us to do it. So I don't think we want to, want to chop those off the table, but using the taxpayers' money for private development, I don't, I've never heard that conversation come up in all my conversations, that somebody thinks that's a good idea.
Bringing, bringing it to the, to the front allows us to be prepared if it does. If we don't have that in writing, I, I know there's things that we have to do. I know that, that we have to provide, uh, and we've, we've gone through that before with other developers, but they've always stepped up to the plate because they wanted it bad enough. So I, I see where you're coming from about it being a policy, and this is a broad brush, but it gets it out in the public as to, that we are, need to be addressing it and do something about it.
Sounds good.
So that we can, we can look to the future instead of saying, oh, damn, I wish we could have thought about that.
So do we need a motion to do that, or can we just ask?
Hold on, Jeff. So, Council Smith, thank you for your foresight. So would you amend your motion to say that we work on a policy instead of, uh, paying for this?
Would you amend, would you amend it to be a policy?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Want to repeat your question?
Yeah, I want to make a motion that, that the town develop a policy.
Addressing?
Addressing the su, the subsidization of private development, uh, for tax, with taxpayer dollars.
Is there?
Shouldn't it, shouldn't it?
Just a second. He's amending the motion. Mr. Brooks made a second to the motion. You get the opportunity to accept that as a friendly amendment.
As a friendly amendment.
You accept that as a friendly amendment?
I did.
Motion made and second. Further questions or discussion on this matter? Mr. Collins?
The only question I have is, is a motion required to do this, or can we, can we not just ask for a policy to be made?
Well, he's, he's, he's made a motion and it's, it's not an improper motion to do that. But you're saying, this is not the establishment of a policy, it's a direction that the town proceed to, to, by committee, I assume, to develop a policy that would be returned to town council for action.
Well, shouldn't it say something about the committee? Shouldn't a motion include the committee?
No, the mayor points the committee. What, oh, you mean the establishment committee?
Shouldn't his?
By committee, the development, by committee.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine.